okay ew um hey all so a lot of stuff happened today actually I went to TikTok star Chase Camo's house twice um because I have to assassinate him I went with my friend Ben and then we got everything bagel seasoning at Stop and Shop and oh my god I'm so excited cause I love everything bagel seasoning so good so and then people trying to assassinate me came over and they were like get out of the house and I was like no they're like come on please just just come out the house be a good person and I was like no I know what this is and I shut the door it's funny me right now so anyway I have these and some of it is circled and I circle a bunch cause I've been meaning to like go oh wait this is my old we love that um I have not done any of the contemporary pieces or any of the cultural pieces so I'm a little scared bestie but I made a timeline okay I made a timeline and it's like actually really good and it like shows all the different things so first we have Old Kingdom which is two thousand seven hundred BCE which is also I believe the same time that the Voda figures were made and I believe those were Sumerian I don't know for sure what college are you going to Northeastern sorry someone texted me um next is Middle Kingdom so just two thousand BCE and sorry someone texted me um and then New Kingdom fifteen hundred BCE and this is when Akhenaten and these are not the exact dates these are obviously uh approximations because in the more like past uh whatever dates you can't really um yeah sorry so in Akhenaten shifted things Akhenaten and Nefreti with three daughters next we have uh Etruscan and archaic which happens around or Etruscan happens before archaic and then Rome breaks free from the Etruscans at five thirty BCE then the Roman Republic begins around five hundred BCE then the classical era starts when the uh Persians sack the Acropolis and then Greece comes back the next year and they're like this is our Acropolis and that's when the classical era rushes in next the Hellenistic era three twenty BCE which is only like a it's only like a forty year period because the uh death of Alexander the Great leads to the Hellenistic period next is Imperial Rome which is twenty BCE with Caesar and Augustus and then we move on to the start of Christianity at like zero AD uh then Christianity is legalized in three hundred thirteen thirteen AD uh thanks to Constantine and this is the medieval beginning of the medieval era uh then the fall of Rome happens in five hundred AD and um Islam begins in six twenty two this ushers in the Romanesque period uh then Charlemagne becomes president not president king uh around the same time as the Islamic Golden Age which is eight hundred AD and um then the Gothic period happens I don't really know what causes like the Gothic period to happen but it just does then Constantinople falls to the Ottoman Empire in fourteen fifty and this starts the it doesn't start the Renaissance the Renaissance happened beforehand but this is like during the Renaissance uh next is the Protestant Reformation in fifteen seventeen oh and also the printing press was created in fourteen forty um next we have the Counter-Reformation such Baroque period and then the Roco Co cause they're like let's you know be indulgent and stuff like that then we have the neoclassical period around the same time as the American Revolution because the Americans are looking back at the Romans and going hmm democracy uh Republic blah 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 then we have the Romantic period with the French Revolution think of liberty leading the people then we have realism which I don't know what is in the realism era I guess like Velasco and no Velas there's Velasco and Velasquez don't know the difference between them let me look this up Vla- who did Las Maninas I think it's Velasquez and Las Maninas was like uh Spain okay Velasco did Valley of Mexico in eighteen eighty two and Las Maninas was I don't remember what period it is Velasquez that should be illegal why do they have the same name if you like misspell one word the greatest will interpret it as one thing or the other I don't like that um okay next we have actually what what fits in the realism cause I think um the Valley of Mexico is is romantic actually no oh stone breakers stone breakers and the Communist Manifesto is also released in eighteen forty eight I don't think should I write that down I'll write it down just for good faith or whatever so like around the time oh this is out of ink totally forgot Communist Manifesto okay and then we have Impressionism which is like Monet and stuff like that oh and Ma- Manet I think was realism I guess you could say uh even though like I don't really view him as realist like his paintings are very cartoonish not cartoonish but like not like you can tell it's a painting kinda thing uh next we have World War One World War Two which happened I think around like after it happened when oh self-portrait as a soldier self-portrait of a soldier that's that's uh World War uh one kinda thing and World War Two is like uh f- a fountain the jungle which I don't know that one all the ones from thirty one hundred thirty seven to one hundred fifty two I don't know and I should I'm gonna briefly look over those ones cause oh my god and then post-impressionism explodes it branches out into wait don't tell me post-impressionism expressionism cubism and one other thing I totally forgot surrealists and foes oh and foes are like Matisse and uh Kerch Kerchwick Kerch Kerchnick whoever did self-portrait of a soldier Kirchner Kirchner okay and um I don't really know how I'm supposed to memorize all of this at once but um I will try my best and yeah oh you know what we'll we'll uh we'll review the Muslim stuff cause I really don't remember a lot of it okay so we have um the Great Mosque of Cordova um in Spain during I don't know when it was made okay seven hundred like eight hundred CE which is around the same time of Saint Fawah which is where the reliquary is with the golden person is okay next we have Mosque of Salem too I need to learn that one cause I totally forgot that one but um anyway um so let's talk about the Great Mosque of Cordova it's in Spain it's a Hypo-style hall which we've seen in the in the in the in the Temple of Amun Ray Temple of Amun Ray and hypo-style hall and this is two layers of arches and spoiler spoilia cause of the um Roman things that they stole columns borrowed from Rome uh which is also seen in the Santa Sabina uh the Great Mosque of the Cordova happens during the Islamic Islamic Golden Age and um the reason why there is a hypo-style hall with double arches is because it helps the heat go up and it also makes the mosque like a more grand thing I guess um and a grander effect to resonate sound and there's the Mirab which is facing Mecca and there's the minaret where people go and call it's like a little bell or something like that but the minaret and the Mirab are different things and the Mirab is in a wall which I forgot the name of but whatever six twenty two is when Islam start Islam Golden Age around eighteen eight hundred around eight hundred great so let's trace this back to um to Rome let's go back to to Rome I don't have anything written down here all I have written down here is the Islamic Golden Age happens during the medieval period okay great but yeah once Alexander dies that's when the Roman Empire kinda the Greeks kinda go down and the Romans go like yeah and Roman Republic two hundred BCE let me let me remember dates oh wait you know you know that thing where it's like pretend this is a credit card where they're like actually you know like this is not a what you think it is it's just a little Saint or top secret instant mat pour refiner I've used this it actually does work um so yeah okay so I can read this through the light we're not gonna do that we're gonna look at my face and I can't read it cause it's backward and really small so Old Kingdom two thousand seven hundred BCE then the New Kingdom Middle Kingdom which is like just roughly two thousand then we have Akhenaten which is like fifteen hundred BCE and then we have the Etruscans and then we have the Romans breaking free from the Etruscans which is five thirty and also archaic Greek which is around the same time then we have Classical Greek which is like four hundred something BC and then archaic Greek which is three tw- oh four eighty and then three twenty cause the death of Alexander and then the Acropolis thing at the four eighty time yeah and then Roman Republic is like two hundred eighty let me look this up I know I forgot Classical Rome or not did I say archaic I meant Hellenistic I meant Hellenistic Roman Republic was just around five hundred and then the Roman Imperial was like two hundred yeah that was it and then Christianity happened and then the Edict of Molli I believe was the thing that legalized Christianity and that was at three thirteen then you got the medieval age then uh Islam begins six twenty two when Muhammad the Prophet does the thing um and then we have the Islamic Golden Age kinda at the same time as medieval period and then in eight hundred oh this is when the Alhambra is made when like all the other things are made blah 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 then Charlemagne becomes king oh I totally forgot the different like things Romanesque blah 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 Constantinople falls to Roman Empire in fourteen I'm just gonna say fourteen hundred fourteen fifteen then the printing press well the printing press happened before then the like Renaissance then the Renaissance stopped fifteen seventeen during the Protestant Reformation and um sorry then the Protestant Reformation Counter-Reformation Baroque Roco Co I either wanna say realis- no Romanticism no neoclassical Romanticism Romanticism neoc- no neoclassical Romanticism realism Impressionism post-impressionism then we have expressionism fauxism cubism and one other thing impressive wait cubism expressionism fauxism I don't know the last thing geez surrealists oh cause the people be like okay this is scary I need to close my window okay now let's do Buddhism when did Buddhism begin Shonohat started in India and spread through the Silk Road four noble truths I'm not gonna remember that at all I love you best wait how do you do it I love you best friend the Seagram Building now we're gonna go over every single piece and I'll tell you what I know about every single piece and you will laugh at me and say this woman doesn't know what she's talking about because I don't so I don't know anything from unit one um except for stuff about Stonehenge I know Stonehenge people think it has a reference to the sun or maybe it has some religious significance and there's also a wood henge nearby like buried somewhere gone and stuff okay White Temple and its cigarette it's built into a hill and it's Sumerian you know I'll circle these in in the in yellow because they're not as pressing as the red but it's good to go over these okay Palette of King armor so it shows like a story and he's like that and there oh there are three separate registers with animals on the bottom and his enemies are like it's like a war battle and his enemies are like and then uh King armor is like in the center and he's like he's wearing the nummies and um palettes the palette was like it it's like it looked like that and uh it was pretty big and they're used like for ceremonies to like mix up makeup and stuff okay great statues of Voda figures okay so their eyes are really big to like show that they're watching because they're kinda like indulgences where they're bought in place for like you know observation because rich people would like buy them and have them commissioned and like yeah and the women had clothes and the men had skirts cause they're Sumerian and like they didn't like have nude uh figures and stuff like that okay C. Describe so he's kinda fat he's a little thick in this one he would have been holding he would have been like holding a papyrus scroll with like a little like pen thing and I think it's a mortuary statue uh and I can't really say anything else about it should I look that up I will look that up it's not super pressing but I will look it up regardless okay standard of earth so it's in three registers and there's like animals and people banqueting and the registers are supposed to communicate like status I believe and um oh it was a wooden box and people think that it was used for music or it would have been like attached to a pole or something for whatever reason I forgot the specific name of what it was but like yeah right so the great pyramids Mankara Caffra and Kufu and Great Sphinx so the lines on the pyramid are supposed to mimic the sun's rays and that's all I can say and the Great Sphinx is also supposed to represent the sun cause the like main god or whatever for Egyptians was the sun god and Akhenaten when he made a monotheistic religion um he chose the one god to be like the sun essentially um and oh there were boats there were boats inside of the Great Pyramid to like show that it was like oh this is your um journey to the afterlife kinda thing and all the like guys were like buried with like different things to assist them on their journey to the afterlife right uh King Mankar and Queen Greywack Old Kingdom right um and it was greywack but originally painted but the paint was supposed to fade away over time possibly to signify the King Mankar and Queen's transformation into Osiris but this uh greywack is used as a symbol of permanence and they're also in a stance of like very idealized body very static very stiff to also show the unchanging nature of the afterlife and stuff like that and uh he's wearing the nummies he has the cobra he would have had a cobra on for protection and um he's wearing like a little cloth thing but her boobs are out I feel like I know more about it but I that's all I can say for now um code of Hammurabi he's chilling on the bottom there's like all the Hammurabi's code Mesopotamia Babylon and Hammurabi it's like a eye for an eye thing that's all I remember I'm sorry that's all I remember about it Hammurabi Hammurabi what did he do I'm looking this up but it's kind of like the greatest daily apagesso parallel to that because oh and he's talking to a god and the god is like on a like thing and he's like writing down the laws maybe baby girl we have we have two hundred more to go no like we have yeah uh Temple of Amun Ray in hypo-style hall well it is a hypo-style hall which means that like light can filter through it and you had to the higher your like statuses the further you got to go in the temple kinda thing that's all I can say about it I'm circling this cause it seems important mortuary temple of Habshetu so she was a woman Pharaoh and uh she was kinda she was also displayed more masculine like too and they also destroyed them cause they're like ew they destroyed cause they're like it was cause she was a woman um Akhenaten Nefreti and three daughters this New Kingdom uh break in the system they kinda look alien like his belly's a little bit more protruded the sun is at the top to show that Akhenaten was the only one who could communicate with the god the one monotheistic god and his wife was there and it's like a it's like a family sort of setting because like they're embracing their children and stuff like that um and there's emotion and it's not in the composite view they try to add a little bit of depth but like not exactly but better than most Egyptian kinda um side carving things and it was limestone New Kingdom blah 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 Tuttenochin's tomb can't tell you anything there was gold in it and it had the Book of the Dead in it and without it we wouldn't have known anything about uh Egyptian culture that's for King Tut I wanted to do a biography on King Tut as child but I don't yeah anyway um last judgment of who never so this one I know I don't know a lot about this one but there's a scale on it and there is Anubis who was putting the dead guys who's who never who I believe was a scribe for those people and he's like putting the heart and if the heart weighs more than the feather it shows that he's like too committed to his earthly ties or whatever and then the little crocodile animal eats the heart and he doesn't get to have an afterlife but if he does get to have an afterlife he gets to proceed on and he meets with Osiris I believe and there are people up at there's a top register of like random uh little like people or whatever who are like this is his life these are the good things to him that he did I don't know who the people on the top are but they're like people who like communicate that like who never was like a good person or something like that uh next we have the Lamasu so they were like guardians of the citadel only thing I can tell you I'm circling that Athenian agora so it had like a marketplace um and then on top of it there was the Acropolis and on top of the Acropolis wait do it no this is wrong this is wrong this is wrong it's not the Acropolis the Acropolis is a completely different thing yeah the Acropolis is a completely different thing I think I don't know what the freaking Athenian agora is I'm looking it up okay next the Anis vos curos um so I think it was a mortuary thing and it's cold I'm gonna shut the window that's why I fell we're still on the first page folks still on the first page these stiff archaic smile um would have been painted blah 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 pepples core people speculate on whether she's Athena or Artemis because her arm is missing uh she's clothed obviously and she has some braids and that's all I can say um I don't think those are really that important I think the coros is important but not the core cause sexism but then sarcophagus of the spouses it kinda shows cause the Etruscans were they gave women a more equal role in their society than like the Greeks or Romans so we have the uh couple at a banquet because Etruscan uh like the funerary practices of Etruscans oh I should have said funerary statue not mortuary one I don't know what a mortuary thing is but same thing but the Etruscans their like funerals were more celebratory because they're like oh and they had a banquet and they're like oh let's have like one last feast with the dead kinda thing um and yeah it's terracotta no yep I'm right it's terracotta and it would have been in like a temple I believe or something like that and yeah okay audience hall it had a bunch of different things from different cultures and it kinda shows like oh we like conquered all of these things uh but we're also like representing it too in this kinda work I need to look that one I already have it circled Temple of Minerva don't know anything about that one I know the Apollo statues he's like that in it he's my favorite hockey born in Arizona moved to Babylona he's a he's favorite hockey alright Tomb of the Triclinium that one I don't know I haven't circled because I know it it's talks about the banqueting practices of the Etruscans during funerals stuff like that it's also not super important but I don't know Naomi's creators uh shows a little bit of depth it's like oh cause Naomi's bragged that her children her seven daughters and seven sons were better than um I forgot who I think Athena no the mother of um Artemis and not Hermes the freaking what's his name Artemis and Apollo and so artists and Apollo it shows like the battle of like Artemis and Apollo killing uh Naomi's children for like punishment obviously uh Niobe's children for like punishment obviously okay spear bear um deriferos contrapasto what can I say I don't know anything else about it I just know contrapasto Acropolis that's the one with the Parthenon Parthenon there's like a little procession or am I tripping cause I really do no the Agra and the Acropolis were together okay weird weird champ but whatever um Acropolis people would like go on top of it and go around and go inside of the Parthenon to pay tribute to Athena because it on the pediments it shows a fight between Athena and Poseidon and Poseidon offers like a dolphin or something I don't even know um and Athena offers an olive branch which is representative of like democracy and stuff like that so the Athenians took the olive branch offering and they like dedicated this whatever temple thing to her and I think it would have been used as treasury treasure treasury okay great grave daily of Pogasso is the woman and like her servant is like giving her like jewelry or something and she's just kinda chilling and it shows that like woman had a low status because on her like grave um it only talks about her like husband and father and stuff like that and like woman's only value in society was their relationship to men society okay winged victory of Samothrace that was not important but she's headless and it's supposed to be Nike and it's supposed to show like the winds flowing on her things great great altar of Zeus and Athena at Pergalon don't know anything about that so I'm circling it also the Veta shows the client patron system there's also the atrium on it and uh has like little paintings on it too to show the status and stuff like that it was just one big flex and it brings that outside and the inside and blah 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 Alexander mosaic um shows the Battle of Isis shows Alexander fighting Darius the third Persia and it shows the turning point in the battle where like the horse is turning around Darius is like oh my god retreat blah 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 and Alexander is like gone and yeah I did a project on this and I barely remember anything about it we love it um seated boxer he's like it shows an old elderly man there cuts all over his face uh bruises blood gashes blah blah his eyes would have been filled with ivory which is a scary sight which I don't wanna picture I think he's a lot less creepy without eyes ironically um like a little two D moment and he's kinda he's just like and he's like in this pose of the feet and it's very naturalistic it's not idealized which is kinda like a thing of the Hellenistic because you know we don't have Alexander anymore Greece has kinda stopped expanding so it's sort of like uh symbolic in that way and um he's also naked but you don't see that part of him head of a Roman patrician very naturalistic it shows that um Rome really saw wisdom in the elderly and these wrinkles were sort of representative of like family lineage and stuff like that so they're very naturalistic very exaggerated in a way shows wisdom shows gravitas weight and uh yeah next we have the Augustus of Prima Porta which is the one that he's like or like technically like that he's like he's like pointing out he's in military uniform which shows his strength or incompetence as a military leader uh on his breastplate there are like scenes of gods and goddesses and next to him there is dolphin cupid riding a dolphin and um yeah also shows that like oh Augustus is a god cause they thought that he was a god blah 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 Colosseum it was in three things Doric Ionic Corinthian um and the poor people had to sit at the top and the rich people sat at the bottom and the games would happen I parallel this to Danganronpa Danganronpa and my teacher didn't had no comment he was like okay cool okay next Pantheon it's the thing with like the Oculus and little like hollowed out parts on the dome to sort of help distribute the weight and also the floors aren't like that they're like this to help with rainwater like rainwater would like come out um if it ever did rain and um also lots of spoiler it's a concrete and symphony I believe next is the Ludovicy Battle sarcophagus which was the Romans fighting the Goths Visigoths and it shows the Goths as like very like gross grotesque barbaric kind of creatures whereas the Romans are like when it's very chaotic and lots of different things are happening and it kinda just shows the whole like theme of civilization and order versus chaos and like uh civilization and logic versus chaos and barbarism and like stuff like that um I'm gonna take a break cause it's been thirty minutes and we will later go on to earlier from colonial and later Europe and Americas oh my god I'm gonna die just kidding I'm gonna do amazing and so are you